We wanted to take some time tonight. It's an important evening and there's been such diligent work over the last six months on this process. And that is our negotiated agreement with our teacher union. And so we wanted to take a second to highlight a few things. There's a lot that goes on in that process and there's a lot more detail than we're going to get into tonight. And obviously, we're happy to review that with anyone that would like to. But we're just going to hit some highlights today. So if you would give me a second to get to my notes, there we go. First, I'd like to just start by just recognizing a couple of things. First of all, negotiations, the process is not an easy process. And it's not easy for anyone that's involved. It's hard work. It's, there's a lot of diligence behind the scenes that goes into it. There's a lot of conversation and there's a lot of things that we're trying to, interests that we're trying to meet in that process. And during that process, it requires lots of patience from people that are involved, also the people that are outside waiting for there to be an agreement. So I want to recognize first and foremost that it was not easy. And it was not easy on anyone that was in the process, our board included, our teacher, union representatives, ourselves involved in that. But also, I understand that goes beyond that. It goes to our team, to our community, to our students. And so I just want everyone to know that we appreciate your patience in that process. And we do want to recognize that that process did have an impact on all of us. And, but I also want to turn and recognize that we are confident in where we are going and where we are going forward with this. And confident in the results that came out of this process moving forward. And I have this picture on the screen and I know that people that have known my time here, 11 years in the district, that that's a Karen, not a Karen like your neighbor or someone you might know, but it's a Cairn, which is a stack of rocks. And it's a wayfinding symbol. And that wayfinding symbol is something that when you're a hiker, these are really important. They're important not just to show you where the pathway is, but to show you where the pathway is certain, to show you where the pathway is safe. And so when we go through this process and when we move out of it and move forward with our staff, one of the things that we can always do is find our common ground, to find our Cairn, our, our symbol of hope, so to speak. And I would say that is that common ground that pulls us together. Our community came together six, seven years ago now and worked together on designing what we call our comic culture. That's something that we came together and asked community members, teachers, staff, students to come together. And we came down to these values. And those values are owning the moment, meaning the idea that we get better tomorrow than we were today. We're a learning organization, so we're constantly getting better at what we're doing. It might be just adjusting our buses this week and getting better at that and delivering on time. It's just, it could be little things, it could be big things, but it's part of what we believe and it's getting better tomorrow than today. We're also, we believe, and you heard this clearly with Mrs. Sears, the idea that building meaningful relationships is at the center of everything we do. We're a people business. And so building those relationships and moving forward, and those relationships matter. And then finally, everyone has a story and those stories come together to make Mason a beautiful place. And you heard some of those stories tonight with Allison talking about her journey and just her connection with our students and how that motivates her. All of those stories are what I would point to as part of our Cairn, our symbol, our symbol of hope and our common ground moving forward as we come out of working through hard things together. And so we do have confidence moving forward. And I want to talk about some of the things that we have learned and that came out of this process that I think will be very valuable to all that were involved and all that will be impacted. One of the things that we talked a lot about is time. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone in the world today that time is probably the most valuable thing that we have with each other. And one of the conversations that we had a lot during that process was the value of time and how time and giving enough time for people to do the work that we need to do to deliver Mason quality, the quality that our community expects from us. You know, people move to Mason from all around the world because of the quality of education, the generations of excellence. And for us to continue to deliver that kind of quality of experience in and out of the classroom, we needed that time. And so that was a big discussion is how do we create this time for collaboration, for dealing with all of the, you know, I taught in the classroom, third and fourth grade. And you know, over my 20-plus years in education, things have changed. The expectations that are happening in our classrooms, our teachers have a lot more on their plate. And we serve a beautifully diverse community. We want to meet all the needs of all of our students. And so that takes time. And so we wanted to really work hard at recognizing that through that process. I want to show you where that shows up in a practical way. So some of the ways that shows up is the calendar. So the calendar is a big conversation as we're going through negotiations because that's where we find the time that we have and the time that we need to move forward. So some of the changes coming out for the 24, 25, and that's the current school year calendar. We talked a lot about that. We don't want to make drastic changes because people have planning in place. But one of the changes that we did was we agreed to have no student days after Memorial Day. So that is new to everyone hearing that. But if you're planning and you're a planner like we are as a family, that we will have no student days after Memorial Day on this current school year academic calendar, which means there will be three fewer student days for us to be able to accomplish that. And that last day of school for all of our students will be on May 23rd, 2025. That also has impacts, not just on our students, but also there's some changes for our teachers as well. And so the changes that we have made for this year is to add more time in terms of flex. So we have this concept called flex time for our teaching staff. And flex time came about in a previous negotiated conversation where we were talking about, you know, our, our teachers are professionals and they wanted to have flexibility in where they worked and where they collaborated, where they, if they want to have a data conversation at Starbucks, they could do it there, that flexibility in time. And so we have 30 hours of flex time built into our agreement and our calendar. And so we've added some time, some flex time this year to that at the end. And we'll, we'll look at some other ways. Came about in a previous negotiated conversation where we were talking about, you know, our, our teachers are professionals and they wanted to have flexibility in where they worked and where they collaborated. They, if they want to have a day. But also there's some changes for our teachers as well. And so the changes that we have made for this year is to add more time in terms of flex. So we have this concept called flex time for our teaching staff. And flex time came about in a previous negotiated conversation where we were talking about, you know, our, our teachers are professionals and they wanted to have flexibility in where they worked and where they collaborated, where they, if they want to have a data conversation at Starbucks, they could do it there, that flexibility in time. And so we have 30 hours of flex time built into our agreement and our calendar. And so we've added some time, some flex time this year to that at the end. And we'll, we'll look at some other ways that we've added that in the future. And then finally, on May 29th and May 30th, those will just be days, they'll be non-workdays, but they are paid workdays, but not reporting to work physically on those days. That's how that, that's how the calendar has impacted this year. Moving forward to future years, we have a structure in place. We'll have a calendar committee that will finalize details. But the general structure, so people understand the general structure, how did we create and find more time? One of the ways we did that was we went from 180 total student days to 178 total student days for the state reporting. But it will include three less in-person student days. And the way we get that, the way that that's structured out, and some people will know this, but if anybody's wondering like, how did you get to that? Because maybe the math doesn't add up for you. But the way we get to that is we have the, the one welcome day at the beginning. And that welcome day is something that came out of COVID. It's one of the great things that came out of that where we all together welcome our families in and we take the time to get to know our families in smaller group settings. So it's a great chance for all of our staff to do that on a workday, but it's also a student day for them to be involved in our families. We have two phase-in days. Those are days where 50% of our students come at a time. And it just allows us again to slow roll that full, that first week so people can come and get to know their routines. Our teachers get to know and build those relationships that Allison Sears was talking about earlier. And then there's four personal learning days. We have two personal learning days currently in our calendar. Those are days where students have the day at home or wherever they want. They could do a college visit, they could work on a project that their teacher has them working on. There's lots of different ways they can use it, but there's connectivity from, it's going beyond the classroom saying, hey, we have days where students can work and do amazing enrichment work outside. And they can come back and report on that and connect with their, the rest of their class. But it also creates time for us as an organization to provide for our, our teaching staff and our other staff members as well. So those will go from two to four. And then we do have one student day that's just an off student day for the day before Thanksgiving break. And so that Thanksgiving fall break, that Friday before will be a day off so that we can create another day for some collaboration for our staff as well. So those are just some updates for the, what's coming up. The last student day will, we're always aiming to have that last student day before Memorial Day on the future calendars coming up in this next couple of years as well. More time. So one of the things that we're really focused on in this calendar conversation was just creating time and what were we able to accomplish together in, in our work through negotiations is one, to honor and to continue the 30 hours of flex time, that time for collaboration beyond the classroom, outside of the classroom for our teachers and continue that, that work that they're doing. The 12.5 hours of on-campus work time is new. So that's a new concept. So the flex time is great, but sometimes teachers want to be able to work with each other in person. And the flex time, they, they could be at different locations and sometimes it's hard to organize everyone to one place. So the 12.5 allows people to be on campus to collaborate here and get work done together in person. And that's really, that was a really important piece of what our teachers really needed. And so we were able to accomplish that. And then there's so many, as I mentioned before, things on our teachers' plates, needs for professional learning and growth, new ideas and collaboration, and there's just so much. And so we only had 15 hours of personalized professional learning time. So we've almost doubled that with this new calendar structure to create more time for learning and collaboration together. You know, better tomorrow than today is part of who we are. And that is just part of learning how to meet students' needs. And so we need time for that. We can't just, this is just happen. And so whether it's artificial intelligence or it's a new way, a new curriculum, we need the time to do that. So this gives us a little bit more flexibility. And that professional learning and that collaboration time, those are times for teachers to be together. Most of our professional learning is in concert with teachers developing that and delivering that. That's why it's a high quality, because our teachers are the ones giving that most of the time. And if not, we bring an expert in and then we try to survey them and find out what do they need next. This is actually one of the questions on our professional learning surveys is what do you need next? And so that helps inform Dr. Brennan and her team and others that are involved in that process to make sure that we're continuing to craft that in a way. And we have big ideas of how that moves forward, that gets more and more personalized to meet the personal needs of each and every staff member. All right, coming soon. So we don't have the structure of the, we have the overall structure of the 26, 27 that will follow the structure of what I just discussed. But we will have a calendar committee come together soon and we will put together those, the details of that and then we'll get that information out to our public as soon as we can. If you do have any feedback for future calendars in the future for us to consider, it's never too early for you to share that with us so that we know kind of how you're feeling because we use that data as well and that information. Always we have community convo at masonohioschools.com. Always let us know your thinking and if it's something that we can incorporate or think through, then we'll try to take that into consideration as we plan. All right, at this time, I think I'm turning it over to our CFO, Sean Bevan.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Before I get into some of the financial highlights of this agreement, I thought I'd take a minute and just talk about some concepts or guiding principles really that have been in place for this board and previous boards over the past 10, 15, 20 years. And really that, that guiding concept when it comes to compensation is being in the top tier of the market. And so that's something that I really appreciate about, again, about this board and previous boards is that you guys really understand that in the service business, like we are in education, the biggest asset we have is our people. And we can't provide a high-quality service or a high-quality, quality product to our kids and families without having great staff. And so part of having great staff is paying in the top tier of the market. So whether that's for anybody who's watched our board meetings over the last few years, whether that's teachers or bus drivers or cafeteria workers or aides or administrators, our, our board's goal has always been to be in the top tier of the market. And so that's something I really appreciate and something that we did see flow through in this contract as well. So if we're going to pay in the top tier of the market, how do we define what that market is? So for us, it really comes down to a couple of things. We're looking at other high-performing, highly-rated school districts in our area. So these are school districts that if we're out, if Tanya and her team are out recruiting staff and they're saying, hey, we, you know, we need a great science teacher or math teacher or second-grade teacher, whatever it might be, what other districts are we going to be competing with for that talent? And, and those districts are a lot of times the same districts that families who might be looking to move into the area or they may already be in the area but might say, hey, I'm not happy with the quality of education where I'm at. I'm going to look to go somewhere else. We believe that these are the kinds of districts that those families might look at, the kind of districts that other staff might look at when they're looking to, to make a move. And so the districts you see up here on the, on the list, again, are these area districts that are highly rated from the niche rankings. And so this is kind of how we define the market is looking at those districts for comparisons. So another thing that's really important in terms of comparisons is education levels and experience. And so we are fortunate here in Mason to have a highly experienced and a highly educated staff. So on the right side of this screen, you can see that about 60% of our staff have a master's degree plus an additional 30 hours of education. So we have a highly educated staff. On the left side, you can see that almost 60% of our staff have at least 16 years of experience. So again, part of the high-quality staff team that we have, lots of experience, lots of education. And that also comes into play when we're looking at, again, our comparisons in the market. And we'll talk more about that here in the next slide. So we have different salary schedules, all school district, all public school districts do. And so we just talked about how 60% of our staff are the masters plus, have a master's degree plus 30 hours. So that means that they're paid on the master's degree, the master's plus 30 pay scale. And so this graph up here, you can kind of see some of those districts that we talked about being in the market, how they, where they top out on that masters plus 30 scale over the last 10 years. And so it's a little bit jumbled, but on the far left-hand side is the first fiscal year there is fiscal year 14. And so the second year in that, in this graph, you can see in fiscal year 15, Mason actually passed Sycamore to move into the number three slot on that masters plus 30 scale. And really, we have stayed in that top tier of the market over, over the last 10 years. So we've gone anywhere from three to two to three. And as the, the school year we just finished, we were number three again behind Indian Hill and Wyoming. They're in the top tier of the market. This chart really just shows the numbers that are driving that graph on the last page. So if anybody wants to look at the details of what exactly those dollar amounts are, it's, it's up here. But again, we are third as we finish the school year, the last school year, third behind Indian Hill and Wyoming. So for this next contract, it's going to cover fiscal years 25, 26, and 27. So the base salary increases for fiscal year 25 and 26 are 3%. Base salary increase for fiscal year 27 is 2.75%. And you see the word base salary increases up here. That is important to note because again, going back to those salary schedules on how we pay, there are step increases as well. Sometimes a step increase has no value to it and sometimes it does have value. So our step increases are anywhere from 0% to a high of 5.74%. So those step increases will also be honored as part of this contract. So this next graph looks at, the first one was looking at the last 10 years up through fiscal year 24, which is what we just finished. This graph also incorporates the new three years to this, to the new contract. So one of the things that's important to note is, you know, with our, with our guiding principle and desire to be in the top tier of the market, you can kind of see over the past 10 years, we've been in that top tier on the masters plus 30 scale. And this contract, good news is that it assures that we will continue to be in the top tier of the market for the next three years as well. So again, same three districts at the top there, Indian Hill, Wyoming, and Mason. So good news, we will continue to be in that, in that top tier. And again, this chart just kind of shows again some of the dollar amounts that are tied and really feed that graph. You will notice on this one, there's a couple of blanks out to the far right and that just means that those districts have not negotiated or settled on a dollar amount or a percentage increase for those years. So the data we have in here is the data we know as of today. Something else that we're really proud of here in Mason is our retention rate. And so we have a retention rate with our teaching staff of over 98%. We know that one of the things that's important for providing a high-quality product to students and families is being able to provide consistency and stability and have that, the same high-quality educators year after year. And so we're grateful that we, we are able to report a retention rate of over 98%. And we're also aware that compensation is a big piece of that. And so again, just grateful that we can continue to be in that top tier, meeting this goal of continuing to attract and retain high-quality staff. So what about attracting top talent? The graphs we've been looking at so far are looking at the top of the scale. When we attract new staff, obviously, we're not going to move them directly to the top of the scale and so they're going to start down the lower end. So let's take a look at that. These graphs kind of show, sorry Tracy, you back up one. These graphs kind of show why that would be important. It's always important to be able to recruit staff. We always want, we always have some turnover or retirees. And so it's always important to be able to recruit some staff. These graphs show that it's going to be even more important over the next 10 to 20 years. Again, looking on the left side, we have about 60% of our staff have 16 years or more experience. If you break it down even a little bit further, we have over 20% of our staff will be eligible to retire within the next 10 years. And so it's going to be really important to be able to continue to recruit new staff to the district. So this graph is actually same concept as the ones we're looking at a minute ago, but a little bit different numbers. These are actually on the, on the bachelor zero scale. So how do we compare, we looked at the masters plus 30 and how we compare to those school districts? How do we compare to these same high-quality school districts on the bachelor zero rate? And again, happy to report that we are also in the top tier of the market with this group. We're actually number four. We finished last year. And again, still in the top tier where we are being able to recruit and retain high-quality staff. This chart again just shows the dollar amounts of that. One of the things that's interesting to note is that there are two districts who are in the top four of both of those graphs. You'll notice that if you look at this comparison, there's a different, there's a different order to those districts compared to the masters plus 30 scale that we're looking at. Lakota and Mason are the only two who are in the top four for both. And so again, grateful that we're able to report that we are competitive at the top of the market and we're also competitive at the bottom of the market. Another piece that's important for recruiting and training staff is a good health insurance package. And happy to report here that we are maintaining the same high-quality health insurance package that we have had before. Our employees, we have a high deductible health plan with a health savings account. Our employees, all employees pay 15% of the premium. And on a single plan with a $2,000 deductible, the board does contribute $1,000 into the health savings account to help offset that deductible cost. And on a family plan, it's a $4,000 deductible. The board will continue to contribute $2,000 into the HSA to help offset that. So again, that's an annual, that's an annual thing. It's what we had in place before and will continue to have that in place over the next three years.
All right, I'll just stay here in my seat to just wrap up this presentation. First and foremost, we, we call this our legacy investment. That's something that we've been working a lot on as a team and thinking about, as Sean said, with a seasoned staff that has great experience, those experiences have created just exceptional opportunities for our kids and we don't want to lose that over time. So one of the things that we've talked a lot about is what does a legacy investment look like? And so we use objectives and key results and OKR system with our team to set goals for the future. One of those focus areas is legacy investment and continuing the generations of excellence that have come before us to continue those on into the future, to continue to be a place where people want to move in that destination district where people come in and they have those experiences. We talk about them and they pass that on to the next generation as well. We love our staff. One of the things that I'll, I'll share is they do amazing things and just a real practical, sometimes it's good to hear just a practical story of how that legacy impacts families. I just dropped my, my oldest off at college this last weekend. And Henry went to college to major in accounting. I believe, and he has told us, a big reason for that is his experience with the business department, specifically the Dawn. Cindy Donley, who the kids just love, and she's a legend here. And she started the bank program, which is a real bank right here in our high school about 20 and a half years ago, 20 years ago. Came to the Board of Education, said, I've got an idea. The Board of Education supported the idea, moved forward. I think even had to give a, some financial support to get it off the ground. She moved forward and kids, year after year, have been impacted. I know Sean has had, his daughter was, I think, a co-president of that experience. And so those are the, when I think of like legacy experiences for our kids and that generations of excellence, it's teachers that have thought outside of the box and created these wonderful experiences for our kids. And then they, that influences them and is a catalyst for them to move forward in, in their own journeys. And so I just am so appreciative. One of our visions here is that each and every comment discover purpose and potential. And this is another example of that. So we are committed to continuing to build that legacy over time with the help and collaboration with our teachers. And today, we just gave highlights of how we're able to do that with the support of the board, the MEA negotiating team, and everyone coming together to do the hard work that's important to continue to move us forward with our momentum. So thank you again. And if you have any questions, Sean and I are happy to answer those. Thank you, Sean and Jonathan.
All right. With the conclusion of our superintendent's presentation portion, the next item on our agenda is the hearing of the public. Tracy, do we have any tonight?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Well, this is a normal time in our meetings when we typically take a pause to let people move on with their evenings if they were here for either just the presentation portion or the hearing of the public portion. But it looks like we have a lighter crowd this evening, some diehards ready to go the distance with us. So we will continue moving forward. Item number eight is our superintendent's recommendations personnel items. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, just, I'm going to run through not everything because this is the, there's a lot on here and I encourage people to look through it because it really does highlight all the things that are going on here that are just so great for our students and our staff provide these opportunities. I'll mention Javaris Powell's on this agenda, just thanking him for continuing to grow the enrichment opportunities for our kids beyond the school year. So we're trying to grow our summer enrichment opportunities for students. So you'll see that in section C, that we're giving him some extended time to do that over the summer to continue that work. Section H, I just want to highlight this because I remember sitting here and begging for substitute teachers and Tanya McCall and her team just going out and inviting people in to, you know, come on, consider it, please. I know you just retired, we need you. We are just so grateful. This list is just enormous. People are coming here left and right to substitute teach. They're having great experiences. And I just want to say right now, our substitute teachers are not just, these aren't just like random people. Like I was sitting in Mary Horvath's math class and she was building a community by having her students build these towers together. And she knows the value of building community so that the kids feel safe, so that they can actually share their ideas and share their math. So that's just one example of what our subs are doing. So they do great work and we're just grateful for them. So continue to sign up. It's a great place to be to meet our kids. Section K, there's some resignations, people having other opportunities and we're excited for their journey. Rich Hetzel in section L has given his notice for retirement and congratulations, Rich, for your, and thank you for your service. In section M, we do have some other people taking a leave that you'll see on here and that information is, is in your notes. And then there are some salary adjustments in section O. Now, the salary adjustments are based on the hours of completion of additional work. So Sean mentioned there's multiple ways that the salary increases, it's not just base, but there's additional ones that a teacher does additional continued learning, which is wonderful. Then they continue to adjust their salary on the salary scale as well. Section P, W, X, double A, A, E, and A, F. I'll just combine those together because it'll take me a long time. But all those sections highlight the amount of extracurricular things that go above and beyond. When we talk about extraordinary experiences, those are staff members, volunteers, coaches that pour into our kids, make a huge difference. And I mentioned my son going to college and he was influenced by our business department here. But he was also influenced by another teacher that's also a coach and is a lacrosse coach. And so it's just people investing in our kids. And so if you have ever considered coaching, please also consider coaching in Mason. We would love to have you here. We have great kids and they're wonderful, wonderful kids to work with. Section A, D, this is one of the largest sections in the personnel agenda. These are event workers. Now, event workers, that list right there just demonstrates that we pretty much are open 24/7 here. We have events going on pretty much every night of the week and those events need someone there to be a point person. And so these are event workers that actually go to those events. Sometimes it might even, like you'll see our athletic director on here like, well, isn't that his job? Well, it's, he's not on here for his work with our school. He's here because he'll be an event worker for other schools that use our facilities because our facilities are so great, it's a commonplace for them to do the postseason game. It's a common place for them to do the postseason games. And so our folks work those games so that people can use the beautiful facilities out here that our community has supported and made available for not just us, but for other schools. And then AJ, the last section there is additional language interpretation support. So we're always adding interpreters to our, our bench so that we can support the, the needs of our different languages and our families. That's all my comments for tonight.